Okay, so Brendan has said we're good to go. I first want to start off by telling everybody happy belated Easter. I hope your holiday went well. Secondly, I just want to thank my colleagues who are on the call today. I appreciate you guys' participation. We've had pretty active meetings for the last, since we started Zoom. So I appreciate you all being in attendance. I apologize for the delay. Tom set this meeting up directly after the press conference, which I completely understand. But unfortunately, there was a, there's a question and answer period, and the press conference ran a little long. So we are missing Commissioner Calvi as well as Commissioner Claproot, but I'm sure that they will be returning, as well as Tim Sheehan, who I'd imagine is also answering questions. So for right now, we'll get started. And if anybody has any questions for the solicitor or TJ or Tom, we'll take this time as an opportunity to ask those questions. So I'll go in order based off of who I have on the screen. First of all, I want to acknowledge Counselor Williams. Counselor Williams, I appreciate you joining and so sorry for your loss, my good man. It was a loss for all of us, loss for the city of Springfield.
I appreciate that. President Hearst and I, I just want to commend everyone for reaching out and showing the family condolences. And the wake is scheduled for tomorrow. So, you know, I'm still in this period of grieving, in a sense, with the family. And but I do thank you for all for reaching out.
All right, thank you, Counselor Whitfield. You got a question?
Um, just one for you, really. Does this meeting take the place of the meeting on Thursday?
Absolutely not. Our meetings on Thursday will continue. We just happened to get some extra time out of the solicitor, as well as TJ and Tom, since things didn't quite align how we wanted them to align thus far. But no, and I see Cam is looking to enter. Does anybody know who Cam is? Is that Camille? So Brendan, I'm going to defer to you to let Cam in. I'm certainly not going to do it. I don't want to get Zoom bombed. Counselor Whitfield. Did you, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't take your hand down. So, okay, so we'll get started. Are there any questions for the solicitor or for TJ or for Tom? Counselor Whitfield, we'll start with you. No questions. Counselor Williams?
No questions at this time.
No questions. Counselor Fenton? Counselor Fenton, did you have a question for the solicitor? Or for?
I'm sorry, not right now, thanks.
Okay, sounds good. Counselor Ramos, did you have a question for the solicitor or for TJ?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Everybody's waiting for our public safety commissioners. Counselor Gomez?
I'm good for right now, thank you.
Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. President. I don't really have a question. We had talked about setting up a time to tour the triage tents that we had set up. I'm wondering if those are done? And if so, do we set that time with Commissioner Harris or with you, Tom?
You can set up with me. We'll probably have somebody from facilities take you, take you through in small groups, if not individually. So yeah, give me a call whenever you guys want to call.
All right, sounds good.
Counselor Edwards, I think I missed you, Counselor Edwards.
No.
Did you have a question?
No.
No. Okay, so since nobody has a question, in order to take advantage of some of this time, I will ask a question of TJ. TJ, they said you, we've spent $900,000 already. Can you give us an idea as to what that $900,000 was spent on? And then can you also talk about the 2.3 in lost revenue that I believe the mayor spoke to at the press conference earlier today?
Sure, just give me one second to pull it up, and I'll be happy to talk about it. Okay, so overall spending is about $944,019. We have it broken out across departments, but most of the spending comes in the form of IT, computer hardware. So this stuff can happen where the offsite meetings or remote meetings. A little bit from Echo Dev, but a big part of what we're spending it on is about $430,000 or so to date for the tents or the field hospital that we have built. A lot of it is for PPE and supplies and materials throughout the departments. I can dig in more if you need to know more, but we're holding it pretty tight, trying to make sure that departments are buying stuff that they need and not take, going a little crazy with it. But we are definitely approaching the million dollar mark.
Can you also speak to the 2.3 in?
Yep.
Lost revenues as well? And then we'll open it up for questions if the commissioners are not here or if Tim is not here as well.
So the lost revenue that we have does not include the MGM payment that they shorted us on the other day. So really, what it comes down to is the lost permit revenue. So we have all, order vehicle excise is down about $700,000, $717,000 from the same time last year. Regular departmental fees is down $428,000. Code enforcement building permits down nearly $300,000. Other departmental fees by the collector's office is down $264,000, and the parking revenue is down $120,000. And the rest is just different fees and interest on investments and penalties that we don't otherwise would have assessed for a total of $2,343,186 down from the same time last year.
Okay, I'll defer to my colleagues. Are there any questions? If there are questions from my colleagues, then you can, then you can just raise your hand, and I'll, I'll call on you accordingly.
Just, Counselor Hearst, as an aside, actually, to add to, Counselor Gomez and everybody else, I got a call of the weekend from Representative Gonzalez, who called and was wondering why there was a National Guard truck parked on Main Street in the North End. And the reason for that was they simply were out getting lunch. So some people were concerned and so on. There was nothing to it other than getting lunch and going back to the tents.
I assume, I assumed that they were parked outside of, hold on for a second. No, I just assumed they were doing something. They were parked out front of the shelter. They could have been dropping off stuff. People got, the one that had called him was somebody from the neighborhood. You know, they see the truck and they assumed that they were like doing something. But they were like in a, in a truck that, like a supply truck. It wasn't like, I didn't take nothing from it, but I'm, thank you for answering that question to him. But for the most part, I kind of assumed they were just, you know, riding by, like you said, getting some food. We got to understand that the National Guard that are deployed, they're from the communities. And, you know, respectfully, they probably were getting some lunch or maybe doing a supply run to a shelter there or something. Because if they're around, they're going to be doing some work in the back end. So thank you for that.
Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Letterman with questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, what was our expenditures last year this time?
Give me one second. So last year, we were at $3.5 million and change. And this year, we're at $1.2 billion.
For expenditures?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you know, the new grant that came out for small businesses, the $500,000? Did that come from some of the COVID grants that we approved last week?
That one, I'm not sure. So I'm trying to get clarity. So now there, the notification, the guidance are coming out pretty fast and furious. So I will have a better sense come Thursday on all the grants that we have seen to date. Because I'm actually just sending an email right now to the cabinet, talking about being strategic in how we spend it. So there are just a lot of notifications out there. And I don't want to misinform the council and the public.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. President. TJ, I saw the information about the MGM payment. What, what is the relief that the Gaming Commission granted them? And how does that impact the partial payment that came to us?
So there was two things the Gaming Commission did. One, because they are not fully operational right now, there's some savings. And so they're estimating a surplus of $2.15 million. And they have credited that to the Gaming Assessment Fund, which is the fund that all of the casinos pay into with their assessment, which is used to fund Gaming Commission operations. So because they're spending less money to operate the Gaming Commission, you know, there's not as much going on, they're crediting a surplus. In addition, because the cash flow is so different, they've changed the timing of the payments to a monthly basis as to one flat fee. So those are the two things that they've done. And so in our discussions with MGM, we're trying to emphasize that they have savings that should be passed on to us that, because we are still, and you know, we are deficit spending. You know, we understand and we're, we're working with them. And I think that is what's going to happen. But, you know, we're, it's, it's so difficult to plan everything with everything closed down and not knowing how long it's going to be. But we are protected not only by the agreements we have, but we have what's called a guarantee and keep well agreement with the parent company of MGM Resorts International. So it's not just what happens to MGM Springfield. It's, you know, we, we have guarantees from the parent company that come into play. So, you know, the discussions are ongoing. And it's, it's with MGM, but it's also with the Gaming Commission. And it has been since all of this started. So that's just to give you some insight of what's going on.
So how, so I see the, I understand the relief they granted relative to their commitments to the Gaming Commission. How's that? So there's, the Gaming Commission hasn't granted them any relief relative to our HCA. They still owe us their full payment.
They definitely have not granted any relief as to what they owe us. But $2.5, $2.15 million in the Gaming Assessment Fund, divided by the percentage allocations that each of the casinos pay, is, would be the relief that be granted so far for the assessment. So, but as we sit here, there are actually two payments that are due under our 121A agreement. The first was due March 15th. That was $6.1 million. That was paid in full. And then the $7.8 was due April 1st, and they paid $5 point something million of that.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Williams?
My question's for Tommy. Tommy, I was just wondering, after the mayor spoke out about the lack of PPE from the federal government, I know some folks and institutions, the neighboring municipalities kind of stepped up to the plate and provided us some. Just a quick question on how long is that expected to last? For like, you know, just our frontline responders? As well as, is there any optimism that you received so far since that press conference? You know, to kind of get us some masks in Springfield?
Yeah. So there has been, TJ can explain a little bit more on his end, but there has been a shortage nationally because the federal government is kind of scooping in and grabbing a lot of the orders that states are putting in or municipalities. But we were very, very fortunate. I'm sure you heard on Friday, when CRRC stepped up very big, told us early in the week that they thought they could get us 1,000 of the N95 masks. And we got there to meet them at Tappus Street on Friday, gave us 10,000. So that puts us in a pretty good position right now to buy us some time. And, you know, obviously, at this point, we're going to get what we can get and take what we can get, order what we can get and receive, and stockpile if necessary, because we know that this is something that we'll have to make sure we plan for in the future and not scrambling, you know, God forbid, in each and again. So we're in a good position now, thanks to CRRC and others. But with TJ ordering and kind of vetting what the real companies are as opposed to the fakers, we'll, we'll continue to do so. So the council's aware. So we have about 40,000 masks and hopefully arrive at the end of this week, beginning of next week. So the lifeline that was extended by all the donations was greatly appreciated. We have four different vendors bringing, that we contracted with, that bring them here, which they have direct access. One of them is a Connecticut company, one of them, two of them are Massachusetts companies, and one of them is just one that we guided out. So one was WB Nathan that we do business with, we have Metline, and then a few others. So I do want to give a shout out to Theo Theocles and the cameraman who helped me track down and vet these vendors to make sure that they were legit. It has been an all hands on deck thing. I know it's all behind the scenes, but it's working out well. So, but we should be in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams.
Last of the government sees is our shipments again.
Yeah, right.
Quick question to Tom. Tom, can we make the same clarion call for testing and testing kits? I mean, it seems to me, based off of our last meeting, I was pretty appalled at the fact that the Commissioner Helen Colton Harris did not have any testing kits for our homeless. And I was even more taken aback by the fact that, you know, they had tested 800 homeless and homeless people out in Boston. But yet here in Springfield, we build these luxury, luxurious tents, and we can't even get testing kits here in Springfield to help to fill those beautiful facilities that we just spent so much money on. And so I guess my question is, you know, are we thinking about doing something similar? I'm not 100% sure that we'll get as many people that will come to our aid, but we certainly should be raising, you know, certainly raising some attention to the fact that we haven't received any testing kits for our homeless, unless something has changed since Thursday.
No, you're right. We put, we are, the mayor's been very loud, very clear that we need not only the testing, but PPs across the board and others. But the problem is, and any TJ can weigh in, that the hospitals are getting the lion's share of the testing. There's, there's no question about that. But they have been cooperative with us, particularly with our first responders, but also with the homeless population. We're still, we're still testing. They're still testing regularly to make sure that we're isolating when necessary. But there is little doubt across the country that these tests are much in demand, but that the lion's share is going to hospitals and not government.
So I'm just going to reiterate again. And for my colleagues, I do plan on having a conversation with our state delegation, and hopefully, we can do it through a Zoom meeting sometime in the very near future. But it would seem to me that we need to be asking some of those tough questions and advocating for test kits. I can't imagine that we're, we should be treated any different than, than folks out in Boston. And if they got 800 of their homeless population tested, then we should certainly get our proportionate share here tested in Springfield.
I can tell you, Counselor, that both of our local senators, Welch and Lesser, have been very, very direct with me in particular, in saying that, asking why Western Massachusetts has been slighted in that regard. So that would be a good conversation you'd have with those. But I, but I can tell you that they've been very aggressive in trying to locate all those items that we're talking about.
And I'll, I'll just conclude by saying that, you know, I didn't know, I heard the mayor loud and clear when he asked for PPs, and I think the entire state did as well. And so I haven't heard much publicly from our state delegation. And so those, those are certainly some of the questions that I plan on asking them when we do have a conference call in terms of what it is that they are doing. Because right now, if they're doing something, we don't know. So I appreciate the input, Tom, and we'll certainly arrange that meeting in the very near future. Are there any other questions? I know we're, I apologize.
Don't apologize. The nature of this, this thing, as we talked about, is it's, it's fluid and it changes. So if you think you have a schedule down and something happens like this, so it just is what it is. So.
Solicitor, and then thank you, Tom. In the meantime, can you just speak to, you know, our conversation with respect to the hearings meeting? I apologize to my colleagues. I know we, you know, we are moving full steam ahead. We are trying to set up a hearings meeting for the 27. We ran into a few snafus. We think we, you know, we think we're getting through those snafus, and hopefully, we'll be able to have a hearings meeting, not at the end of this month, but at the end of next month. But Solicitor, if you could just explain some of the things that you and I have been discussing and some of the things that are on the radar to allow us to officially have a hearings meeting where everybody's rights are protected?
So let me just try to summarize some of the discussions we've been having. The first is, we've shared a great concern as to opening a Zoom meeting to the general public. We've had a few examples. Our association actually had one where what happens is people start bombing the meeting with all kinds of negative input from people who have no business being part of the meeting. So we paid attention to the way the State Gaming Commission or Cannabis Control Commission or some other agencies have done things. And for the most part, they have been doing audio streaming. And the only Zoom participants have been the members of the commission and the participants themselves. So going forward, at least for the short term, we anticipate that all of the counselors would be on Zoom and the cabinet members or participants in the meeting would be. But the public would not receive a Zoom link due to cybersecurity concerns. We would, as I said, supply an audio link so anyone can listen in to what is going on. In addition, the meeting, the video aspect is being recorded, and that would be uploaded so that anyone after the meeting can watch what was presented and, you know, have the, have the recording available so that there would be a record for the public. Now hearings, we're trying to figure out, and the latest that we've got, and this is working with President, working with Focus, and trying to get a handle on how other hearings might be done. The public meeting is one thing. A hearing is much different. And we're considering at this point a two-part meeting. So for example, let's, let's take this drive off window for Dunkin' Donuts. We give a notice of the meeting. We have the participants have the Zoom link. And there is a, the hearing portion is completed. Prior to the hearing, we notify everyone, and this is something that we've looked at the way the state has been doing things, where anyone who wants to send in comments by email, by fax, by voicemail, or regular mail, can do that. And everything we get up to the time of the meeting is put in the record at that first meeting. We then continue the hearing for another time. You know, and my suggestion is that we put both of the times, the date for the original meeting and the continued meeting, whether you make it the next day or the next week, whatever it would be, where between the time of the first meeting and the second meeting, we would have a additional period for people to send in comments responding to what happened at the first meeting. At the second meeting, we would add those additional comments into the record, and we would have the proponents responding to what was said. We would then close the hearing. We would then have a deliberation and a vote at that meeting. So a two-step process to satisfy the ability of people to listen in, to express their comments, and to rebut anything from the first meeting. So that, that is, we don't have, we couldn't find a technology that provides us the ability for the transparency we happen to date and cybersecurity concerns. And so that seems to be the best option right now for conducting a hearing.
So thank you, Solicitor. With that being said, I see that we now have the commissioners in the room as well as the Director of Planning and Economic Development, Tim Sheehan. So we'll, we'll continue to report back to the council in terms of how we're going to handle our hearings meetings. But I think in short, or in summary, we're getting there. So I will keep everybody posted. Tom, if it's okay with you, if we could just start off with a brief, two-minute update by the commissioners, and then we'll go straight into questions so we can take advantage of the, of the time that, that we have. Thank you, commissioners, for coming. Thank you, Tom, for arranging this. Helen is not necessary, but I appreciate that she is here. She's always necessary. But this meeting was not designed to ask questions of you, Helen, but we appreciate you for being in attendance. Commissioners?
Counselors, thank you. As I gave the mayor the update today, the police department's looking better this week than last week. We actually have five officers back to work who previously tested positive for COVID-19. So they've already recovered and they're back. Tomorrow, I think I get two more. So that'll be seven officers that at one point tested positive and are back to work. Because of COVID-19, I am down 21 officers and one civilian right now. And, which is not horrible. Last week, at one point, I was down 39 due to COVID. So I'm down a total of 22 today. Some are just awaiting tests and don't know if they have it or not. And some are still recovering. We are working well with the National Guard. They have only been used in a position where they are protecting the setup across from the homeless shelter on Worthington Street. There's, they're taking shifts there. They have a trailer behind the structures, and they're doing three shifts there. So there's always someone there to make sure that people who are using that facility feel safe and secure, and it's keeping people who aren't supposed to be there from entering. They're doing well. There were a couple of them in the station today to report back to me. And so far, so good. People are actually donating food and desserts to them also, as well as to the police department. We have been the lucky recipients of a lot of generosity from the community. They're taking turns coming to the police department for lunches and dinners. So we're greatly appreciative. We are trying to return that favor and take turns with different parades and gifts to the healthcare workers whenever we can. We're also just have the, I think it's nine to 12 troopers a day, but they're spread out amongst three shifts. They are just backups. They have done, they haven't taken anything as the lead. They have been there for support should our officers get shorthanded. So all. officers get shorthanded. So all in all, between the generosity of people donating the, the personal protection equipment, I, I now am able to give every officer, if they want it, just about as many masks as I can take out. We have the glasses. We have the gloves. And I think, as I said today at the press conference in, in the other room, the, the initiatives we took, the separation of officers immediately, the cleaning of the cruisers as diligently as we are through, through the maintenance facilities here with the janitors during all of our substations and our, our station so many times a day and the officers being able to have the PPE equipment. We have kept this at a minimal as far as, as hurting our manpower. So we are in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we go straight into Commissioner Calvi?
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody. Currently in the fire department, there are six people out with COVID-19 related issues. Only one member has tested positive. The other five were quarantined as a result of family members or contacts outside the, outside the work environment. They've all been tested. They are all negative. Three of those members are coming back to work this week. So we'll then be down to only three members out. The tempo of calls has dropped significantly with what's going on out in the community. EMS calls are down. I talked with AMR the other day. Their EMS calls are down as a whole in the city. Midweek wise, they're seeing what a weekend volume would be, which is much less than during the midweek. We're seeing the same thing. Everybody's been great. We've got the appropriate protective equipment onboard now. We always had appropriate equipment onboard, but we're starting to run a little bit low. So the donations we've got were back up over what our car level is. So we're in good shape there. I announced today, we're going to be starting a food drive program to help try to support the food banks and collect food in the neighborhoods and try to get it to the food banks to help the people who are in need. You know, we're all still working. So I'm hoping to get a good turnout from the union and everybody donating food so we can get the food banks to help them out a little bit. Everybody's been great with us. We've had people drop off deals to the firehouses. We've participated in a couple of parades. Everything's going real well and I'm very happy with how things are going right now. As a, as a total, we've got one of the lowest outages of any major metropolitan fire department in state from the actions we've taken with cleaning firehouses, cleaning apparatus, the protective equipment we've had on scene, the steps we took for use of equipment and protective measures right off the bat. We've had, we've had a very low exposure rate for COVID-19 compared to other major metropolitan fire departments in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we'll stop there. Tim, if you could just bear with us for a few moments, we'll spend the next 20 minutes just going through the list of counselors that I have in order here. We're on the Zoom call. If they have, if you have any questions for our public safety commissioners, you can ask them at this time. We'll start with Counselor Edwards and hopefully we'll get you guys out of here in 20 minutes. We appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule. Counselor Edwards, did you have a question? Counselor Edwards. Okay, we'll move on. If you, you might be on mute, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Whitfield?
I have more. Thank you, Mr. President. I have more of a comment. I just want to thank all of you for everything that you're doing. We couldn't do anything without you. And I just wanted to say to Commissioner Clapproot that I had a noise call on Saturday or I got a text about it. I, I, I text you and I text Sergeant Williams because you were the people that I go to and I know that you both are busy, but I called the regular non-emergency line and the officers responded in like three minutes. So it's, it's just goes to show like how committed everyone is. And back to the community, we're not missing a beat. So I, I thank you all for all the great work that you're doing. Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, I always hear great things about you on a daily basis just about and the work that your team is doing. And I know that everyone out there is doing a great job. I did have one question and I'll get to it for Tim. I know that the, there is a grant that-
Counselor Whitfield, if we could just hold off on the questions for Tim?
Oh, we're gonna get back to that?
Yeah, let's just-
This is good for them. Okay, I just wanted to say thank you guys for the great work that you're doing. Keep it up. Thank you for being so responsive and we appreciate you. You, you know, you're really, really risking your lives every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Gomez.
No questions. Just a huge thank you from me. Thank you for everything that you're doing. And please keep in contact. Let us know what we can do for your departments.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Williams. Thank you, Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. All I gotta say is to Commissioner Clapproot, thank you for 41 years of service to the city of Springfield. And Commissioner Calvi, thank you for your update and Godspeed to the both of you on a blessed week where we can get back to capacity as soon as we can. Thank you.
Gentlemen, if, and ladies, if all we had were, were thank yous, then I would have let them get back to their work. I'm hoping we have a few questions for you all. Counselor Williams?
Now, Justin, you just put me on the spot, but I, I also like, I also do appreciate everyone's efforts in the city. But I do have a question. It's might, it might be a little off the, off the rail, but just in regards to canines. I, I know there was some misconception about whether animals can actually catch the virus. And I think there's been some confirmed cases of that, maybe one in Massachusetts if I'm not mistaken. So just wondering, is there, what's being done to, I guess, because there has been several officers that have caught it. And if, I don't know the, you know, whether or I guess how many canines actually exist in the city of Springfield that officers use. But are there, are there any precautions being taken in that way?
There are, Counselor, and thank you for asking that because I'm a, I'm a lover of my German Shepherds and our canines. We have currently have nine active canines and all our, I'd say all the canine officers are healthy. So that's my worst concern. I, I think if one of the canine officers were to become sick, then we have a great relationship with Boston Road Animal Hospital. We could get that, that animal tested right away. But so far, so good for all of them and they are on the lookout for it, believe me. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Williams. I'm sorry, Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thanks, everybody, for your work. There's supposed to be very high winds today and I know we have the homeless tents set up on Worthington Street. Are we doing anything to secure that site in light of the weather that I can hear outside my window and is expected for the rest of the day?
Thank you for, oh, thank you for asking that question. I'm so happy to be with you. The, we did last night take steps. I'll let Commissioner Clapproot talk about what security is doing. But we did last night understand that there could be winds that could reach up to 70 miles an hour. The tents were designed to withstand 80 mile an hour winds, but out of abundance of caution, we had six individuals in the, that facility, the tent. And we have moved them to 501 Worthington Street. So those individuals will not be in the tent this evening. We will move them back as the weather gets better tomorrow. So thank you for asking that question. We do want to keep everyone safe. Commissioner Clapproot can talk about these security aspects.
Counselor, based on that move, we asked the National Guards, they're gonna have a presence at 501 Worthington while we have patients there. They're also gonna maintain security at the existing site across from the shelter. And we asked them if they'd let us know how the structures do hold up. I am told that they, they do, as Helen said, 90 to 100 mile an hour winds, big cement blocks hold the nose, so structures down. So, but the National Guardsmen will, will make a report tomorrow about how well them structures did, but nobody will be inside them today.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Brown?
No questions.
No questions. Counselor Brown?
First, I want to congratulate Commissioner Clapproot on 41 years. I also want to commend the work that the staff has been, everyone has been doing. You guys have been doing an excellent job. I've been around for a long time as far as the commissioners run. And I just, I mean, if I have to ask a question, I'd ask, I'd have to ask the commissioner all her great work and the things she's done. How do you feel being, I'm a police kid's son, how do you feel being my, my favorite commissioner? I have to ask a question. And I've been through a lot of commissioners. I've been through a lot of commissioners now. So how do you feel being my favorite commissioner?
You made my day. Can I go now?
I, I, you know, if there are-
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. If there are no further questions for either Commissioner Clapproot or Commissioner Calvi, if there are any additional questions, I'll give you about 30 seconds and you can raise your hand in the queue.
Just real quick before I can raise my hand, because I don't have time to, yeah, because I'm on my phone out of my iPad. Commissioner Clapproot, I actually, I know that Mr. Ash, I spoke to it, but I know that in our community, there, there was a sighting of, of a, a National Guards truck out there. Just obviously he was getting lunch. But if there were to be dispatches to any of our communities, your office would be in contact with us just so we could get a, get a better angle. So then if we do see him in the community, we don't have to call Tom or yourself on the weekends and stuff like that.
If, if the National Guards truck was, was on the community, they're, they were getting lunch or getting food. They, they do not respond to calls. They do not get calls and receive calls. And if we got to that point, you'd certainly be the first to know. But as of now, they're strictly for the, the homeless security.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not, thank you. I just wanted you to get that on the record. That's all. I, I knew exactly what they were out there for. But just so if anybody had missed that, what the, the comment that Tom had said. But thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm back. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to Commissioner Clapproot, what, what, what types of calls are we seeing coming in during this time? Obviously, we have a severely sort of decreased public activity. So I'm just curious kind of what types of calls are coming in, if we're seeing a spike in any calls. I know we've heard, we heard a couple of weeks ago about a spike in DBs. And I'm also curious if we're having people calling in. I'm hearing, you know, some people saying they're still seeing people having parties, large gatherings. Are we receiving those calls?
Counselor, not, not as many as I thought. The crime rate has dropped significantly, which of course, people not out and about. As far as the large parties or gatherings, not like I thought would be coming in. They come in few and far between. And when we do get them, everybody has been receptive to a warning on the PA. We have not had to go to the Health and Human Services Director here and say we need a cease and desist. We have checked on certain information will come in about bars that are open. We checked and, and so good. Everything is working out well. Even the violence people have not had the uptick that I thought would happen. We, we did a run on, on the three weeks here that we've been supposedly shut down. We're only 47 calls for domestic violence this time last year. So I'm pleased to say that so far, so good as far as your crime rate goes. Every once in a while, we'll still have the, the violent crime and, and the guys are making arrests and they're still investigating. So far, so good as far as the crime rate.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If counselors could just remember to mute their microphones when they're not speaking, it'd be greatly appreciated. Counselor Whitfield, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, this is for Commissioner Clapproot. I wanted to know about the gatherings too, like how do you report them? Because yesterday I rode by AIC and usually there's not a lot of folks out there. It might be one or two together or something like that. But yesterday, there was a gathering of young people and I just, I didn't do anything. I'm just like, they shouldn't be gathered, but I didn't report it. And I, I wouldn't know how to go about reporting. I'm not trying to get them in trouble, but I'm trying to keep them safe.
Yeah, most counselor, most, most come in through the non-emergency number and some come in through 311. And some go to different departments, like one went to Pat Sullivan because of a volleyball net set up where people were gathering. But I will tell you that most times when we get those calls and we respond, everybody's been very cooperative.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right. Seeing no further hands raised. Commissioners, thank you so very much. We appreciate your time and keep up the good work. We'll now turn it over to Tim Sheehan. Tim, if you could just give us a brief update. I know there's a recent grant out there. It'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, counselors. Let's do a revisit on what we've done so far and talk a little bit about where we're going in terms of the new CARES Act money that's coming forward. First of all, as you all know, there was a restaurant round for small business assistance, roughly $225,000. Of that, there were 30 awards. I think that we were pretty, well, I know we were pretty pleased with the ethnic diversity as well as the geographic diversity of those awards. We, right now, as of last Friday, we have approximately a third of them have been cleared to contract and we are working to expedite with the businesses directly and get as many processed this week as we possibly can. Those that have been cleared for contract should be getting their checks this week or early next week. As you folks know, the whole purpose of this program is to try and assist, assist the small businesses while they're waiting for the larger CARES Act relief coming from the federal government. We'll talk a little bit about that later. This Friday, the small business grant awards were made active in terms of, the grant program was made active for application. The applications are due back into us this Thursday, close of business. We anticipate that this round is going to be probably even more competitive. That this round is for $500,000. The reason I'm saying it's more competitive is because it's not just restricted to restaurants. It's restricted, involves any small business in the city. And the use of those funds could be for not just payroll, but also you could utilize it for inventory, for rent and other business expenses. One of the criteria that we are putting forward though, is that the business either needs to be open or it needs to be operational remotely and open under obviously the emergency waters. So we're anticipating that there'll be a flood of applications coming in on that program this coming Thursday. Again, we're looking to contract that as quickly as possible so that we're moving money out there to address the needs that are out there in the community. We are encouraging and working with the SBA to, to try and get as much of the SBA's message out there, which is, and you folks should know this as well, if folks are contacting you, you should encourage them to go to the SBA website and get their business registered if they're less than 500 employees. In, in all honesty, it's going to take some time to get through that registration process. And it, from what I hear back, it is a little bit frustrating. It's not as seamless as it should be yet because of the high demand that's being put onto that system. But it is critically important that the businesses, if they are looking for small business relief under the CARES Act, they need to get their business registered with the SBA. And one of the, the most influential programs that the SBA's got under the CARES Act is the PPP program, which basically allows those small businesses to cover their payroll for eight weeks out. So it's retroactive to March 1st. So we would strongly be encouraging, working with the small business community to get as- to get as many businesses registered as possible on the SBA. Just as a quick update, uh, in terms of the CARES Act as it relates to the city, we have gotten notification of our ESG funding out of the CARES Act as well as the, uh, HOPA for folks with AIDS. And we also, um, all, got the CBPG notification, uh, last week. That represents, uh, about three and a half million dollars. And we'll be going forward in terms of programming that funding as well. Obviously, uh, the ESG money, which is basically focused on homeless assistance, a significant portion of that, uh, will be offsetting any costs that won't be covered by FAMA with regards to what we've done in terms of the homeless facility up on Worthington Street, um, and preparing for that. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, uh, Tim. We'll start off with Counselor Whitfield and if, uh, counselors could just raise their hand, I will call on you accordingly. Thank you. Counselor Whitfield? I need to take yourself off of mute, Counselor Whitfield. All right.
I'm sorry, did you call me?
I did, I did.
Okay, okay.
Counselor.
All right, um, Mr. Sheehan, how many, um, applications came in for the last small business, um, application process?
The restaurant round had, uh, 80 applications, uh, that totaled over a million plus dollars.
Okay, and this new round, I'm sorry, I know we only get one question. This is it, this is my last one, I promise. How, how, where did the money come from for the new one, the new grant?
There, we were anticipating carrying over a half a million dollars into the next program year, which would be effective July 1st. Based on the, the disaster, we ultimately decided it'd be best to redeploy that money rather than wait to, to actually expend in July.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Um, where, where I'm having an issue in my, uh, area is that there's, um, there's certain businesses that don't make it, the, the, the actual revenue to qualify. Is there a way to lower, um, what you have to make yearly in order to qualify? Because it's, it's something that, it's not obtainable in my area. There's, there's certain businesses and certain people who don't make that much money off their businesses in order to qualify for certain, the certain, uh, funding that's out there. Like they miss it just a little bit.
Counselor, are, are you talking about the SBA funding or are you talking about-
There's a, there's a few of them, a few of them. Because even with Mia Culture, Culture, um, it's a, a new restaurant that just opened up in the area. They just started. I know there's people who get in, uh, and people who aren't getting them. I'm just making sure, you know, that we can lower the, lower whatever we have to lower in order to make sure everyone, um, is have, being able to, 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 to have some of this relief funding. Is there a way we can lower some of those numbers?
So on, on the initial round, it, there was, there was no cap. There was, there was actually, uh, it was 250, your operating revenues were $250,000 annually or less. So you could go down to whatever your operating revenues were. There was no distinction on that. It was, it was trying to put a ceiling on the, the larger scale restaurants that might have a, a much more profitable, uh, equation to try and assist those that aren't as large.
And, and what do they have to, I'm, I'm saying, what do they have to, say, say, someone who's kind of mom and pop-ish, but maybe not so much? What would they have to do in order to obtain it? Because there's some people, what would they have to do is what I, I kind of-
What, what they need to evidence back to us, because it's a low and moderate job, uh, creation retention program. That's the national objective and the program, um, that we're coming in via HUD on. They need to evidence to us that they actually have a low moderate income position in their payroll.
Okay.
And i- if they're, if they've got, um, a line cook or, you know, someone that, that's doing delivery or anything like that, they should be able to get to evidencing i- in one form or another, um, that they, they have a low moderate income job in their payroll. The only thing that we can't do, uh, is clearly, we need to be able to document that there was a retention of this position. So if, if, and this is an issue in terms of the restaurant industry in general, if they're paying people under the table, we can't document that and therefore that's not acceptable. So, um, that creates a little bit of consternation in terms of, uh, um, the processing of the, the, uh, the grants.
Well, I've seen, I've seen people use, uh, you can use, uh, anything to, to, to document someone paid under the table. Would that be acceptable? You can, you can use, no?
I- 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 to comply with the HUD regulations, the, the proper withholdings on the position need to, to be accounted for. So the payroll tax and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As long as they can evidence to us, and again, this isn't saying that you had to go to a third-party payroll provider. All we can do is be able to evidence that you're writing a check for that individual in terms of their pay and your proper withholdings on their, 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 uh, in their employment stats.
So even a copy of a check or something, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead, uh, probably he's a little tied up. I know I was the next one in line, just so we can, uh, get the time moving. So, uh, Tim, thank you for, uh, you know, that information. I think the question, I think my colleague was trying to figure out is, I know that we had those strong stipulations specific to the payroll. I had a couple of people call me this first round. But I think what's evident and what's positive about the second round is that sole proprietors can apply for this grant then. Because the first, the first round, uh, aside from the check situation or kind of, uh, people to, to show that they have people on payroll, what I'm running into is people that are sole proprietors trying to touch on this money. Not essentially the SBA, because I know through the SBA disaster relief, uh, link that, you know, there's that $10,000 forgivable and then, uh, they can get that right away and then they could, you know, uh, they could give them that loan. But specific to this, this round, um, are sole proprietors, because I, what I've, what I've heard from what you stated in your update was that, that, um, they'll be able to do other things with that money other than payroll. Because the first round, if I'm right, was just for payroll. This round, they can pay like their rent, supply and stuff like that from what I heard. So sole proprietors can apply?
That, that is correct. Ultimately, they're, uh, still have to evidence to us that they, they have maintained a low moderate income job on their payroll, but they can use the money for other expenses besides payroll.
All right, excellent. Do you got, one question I had, when I looked at the list, when I'm gonna be honest, you, you, you're very accurate on, there was geographic and there was some, um, you know, ethnic diver- diversity, which I, I thought that was big when I, when I analyzed the list. But there was one restaurant, which I kind of, it pulls me into that they're kind of like a, a food chain. Even though that you guys didn't, uh, didn't award them a lot of money. Uno's, I know that, uh, Uno's, there's a bunch of Uno's. Is that local or from what I understand, from what I've seen, it's been, it's like a, a chain? And I wanted to understand why they received, you know, even though it was 5,000 versus a, a, a small restaurant or something that is kind of struggling? Did they fall under, fall under that criteria of the 250 or less?
The, the franchising ultimately had to be locally owned. So if somebody had bought, uh, a franchise, which Uno's is a franchise, and the, the ownership remained local, then they were eligible.
Oh, okay, no problem. Thank you for that answer, I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you on this next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, uh, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Williams. We have roughly 10 minutes remaining. I'm gonna try and have a hard stop of 12:35. So I only see two hands raised. Again, if you want to ask a question, if you could just raise your hand in the queue, it'd be greatly appreciated and we'll try and get to you. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, uh, thank you so much for your work and for keeping our economic engine working. And you have given us a lot of good, uh, information. I'm glad to see that we are out there, uh, keeping the wheels turning. Uh, however, I do want to talk a little bit about an important segment in our economy here, local in Springfield, that is transportation. Full disclosure, before I go on, I do own a very small, uh, transportation company. Uh, I know in my own personal case, I have not worked for a month now. So I'm just wondering, what are we doing specifically gearing towards, uh, small and pop kind of transportation operations? To help them out? We are, there are some that are working on a very minimal basis. There are others that are just completely closed. And, um, you know, it's gonna be, it's hard, it's very hard on them. So I'm just wondering specifically, what can we do, uh, to help them out? And who would you target and would you tailor something for the food industry? Is there such a thing in the works for transportation?
Counselor, the reason that we, we went to the restaurants, uh, as an individual, um, uh, grant was primarily because the restaurants were the first to be impacted and most significantly impacted by the, um, uh, uh, emergency orders. So that was the purpose of, of going to the, the restaurant industry first under the grant. The small business grant ultimately is not industry-specific. It's open to all industries, uh, that basically meet the, the SBA definition of a small business. And, um, uh, I don't know that we would want to have multiple funds that are, are ultimately industry-specific.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure that I follow you, Tim. I mean, I'm sure this is a conversation that we can expand later. I don't, you know, because even, even with some of the SBA, uh, guidelines that you just, uh, gave us a little while ago, there are some companies that are not operating at all. There are some that may be, uh, but they're not. And so by the time this crisis is finished, um, if we don't help them out now, they're gonna be in real trouble when we get to this crisis and some of them may not be able to operate. And so, um, I, you know, I put that out as a food for thought. You know, maybe we as a city can do something specifically, maybe some sort of micro loan or forgiving loan or something. But I think i- i- it's something that we need to pay real close attention to as we know the transportation here is fragile as it is.
I, I think that i- i- in, in thinking about how we're dealing with the businesses that ultimately are closed and how to assist them getting reopened as quickly as possible, what we can be looking to is the CARES funding that's coming under, um, the, the, uh, CBPG side of the house. As I indicated in the outset, um, what we did was look at what we had available to spend relatively quickly. And, and this roughly three quarters of a million dollars is what we had. And the, our primary focus needed to be on trying to, um, assist businesses that were open and operating under the emergency orders and had, um, employees, uh, that were still on the payroll. And I also think the, the issue of importance to us now is maintaining that employee employer relationship so that if, if, if the, the person ultimately doesn't end up having to go into an unemployment situation. And then, you know, especially with low mod, uh, employees, um, i- that's a high-risk issue. Because their reemergence back into the workforce is made that much more difficult, given their income strata sphere.
Thank you.
I just wanna finish a quick thought. Tim, thank you for that explanation. I do still think that the administration should look, um, in ways to, to, to look at and to ensure that, uh, transportation is, remains vibrant. If we don't pay attention to it now, we will have a problem with it later. And, uh, we know we, uh, we have problems with things in the past. So, um, thank you, Tim, for that, for that explanation. I do look forward to, to continue looking at this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We have Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Whitfield. And I believe that is the last hand that I see raised. So we will conclude after Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question related to, uh, the Emergency Solutions Grant, but I think it might be better served if I asked Jerry McCrafty in housing. But the, the question I have for you, Tim, is, um, it regards mobile food trucks, uh, that, you know, of course, they fall outside of the brick and mortar restaurants. But I expect that they would also be hit by the pandemic just because, uh, the proximity they have to be to people and everything like that. So I was just wondering, um, do those fall in either rounds for the relief funding? And if so, what justifiable expenditures can be used, um, for the money?
They, they would be eligible. Ultimately, they would be able to pay for any of their overhead costs in terms of inventory or anything like that. They could, if they had employees, they would also be eligible to utilize their payroll, um, as an expense as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oops. Thank you, Counselor Williams, uh, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you very much. I just want to piggyback on what Counselor Gomez and what Counselor Davila is saying about the small business grant. Because you got, um, organizations that were forced to close, like barber shops and hairdressers and other industries that could utilize funds because regardless, they still have families to take care of. And yet they don't have access to any of these funds because they don't have payroll. Well, some of them do have payroll, but because they didn't remain open, um, even they could even share the love with a grant to help, um, pay some of their employees. Because it's, it's just as difficult to them as businesses that stay open. So is there any type of relief, um, effort for those type of businesses coming down the pike?
Ultimately, if, if they are carrying payroll, then they are eligible, even though they're closed.
Okay, because I wrote down when you said it was, um, for open and operational, if they're operational remotely or if they're open. So obviously, hairdressers, barber shops, not open.
Not open and most likely they don't have the ability to work remotely either.
Right. So, um, they wouldn't qualify?
Unless the, the, the owner of the business is actually carrying the payroll. So if the, if, if they've got people that are, are being paid while they're closed, we would accept an application on that.
So for those that cannot afford to do that, because you know, as, if we talk about barber shops and hairdressers, they usually, um, pay commission to their employees or the employees pay for like booth rental. And so they don't have the ability to do that, yet they still have families. And right now, they can't apply for the unemployment because the guidelines are not up until the 30th, um, at, at the state level. So from like March to now, there's no income for them. What, what should they do? Is there any type of relief coming from the city for them?
And, and that ultimately is where we could put into play the CARE CBPG funding that we talked about to try and figure out, you know, okay, those businesses that could not, that actually had to be promoted and had the ability to maintain their payroll because the, the, the people couldn't effectively work from home, how do we deal with that? You know, perhaps do a funding round, um, for that, that specific pool.
Okay, well, I hope that that will be a group of folks that are considered because just not having payroll and being forced to close and you can't be open shouldn't- payroll and being forced to close, and you can't be open, should not limit them the ability to apply for application, because they need funding, um, just as bad as businesses that are covering payroll and can remain open, so I just want you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Uh, are there any last questions? I don't see anyone, any hands raised in the queue, so seeing none, uh, Tim, thank you so much for being in attendance to my colleagues, thank you so much, uh, for your thoughtful questions, and we will reconvene on, uh, Thursday at eleven-thirty, and thank you to Focus Springfield.